All right, at this time, we're going to call our meeting to order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. All members of council are present with the exception of Counselor Miller and Mayor Birch, who are excused. Approval of the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment, is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda from May 16th, 2020 council work session minutes and May 16th, 2022 city council meeting minutes. Your motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I love it, yeah, participation. Well, I think we know what is about to happen next. We have our ceremonial swearing in of our new police chief, so I'm going to ask you to come up front. We're going to get this done. Raise your right hand. I, Stephen Lugow, hereby swear on my oath to honestly and faithfully discharge my duties of Chief of Police for the City of Scappus and that I will support the laws, the constitutions of the State of Oregon and the United States of America and the charter and ordinances of the City of Scappus to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Chief, is there anything you'd like to say? So at this time, we're going to excuse the chief because he has quite a crew here to spend the evening with. Thank you all for joining us. Take care, thank you.
That's really cool. He did say he has a lot of family here.
It's awesome.
I think that's his brother, right Barry?
Just going out on him.
All right, we ready to keep going? I'm just sort of staring in awe.
That's great.
All right. New business, Community Enhancement Program allocations. I believe we're going to hear from all right, Isaac, who's on the line? Isaac, take it away.
Yep. Good evening, Council. First off, can you hear me okay? I just want to make sure since I'm remoting in from not in town.
We might raise it on our end, too.
We can hear you, but we're going to adjust the volume up a bit.
All right, yeah, sorry, things are a little bit touch and go with the internet, so hopefully everything will be okay. So on May 16th, Council saw 16 very compelling presentations for the Community Enhancement Program, and this is simply to document Council's allocation decision. And so if you look at Exhibit C and Exhibit B, you'll see the complete tabulation of Council's funding eligibility tally and each counselor's allocations. Total allocation for this year's Community Enhancement Program is $39,999.96. The exact amount that will be allocated can be seen in Exhibit C. So I'm not sure if there's any questions, but I'm here to answer them if you have them.
Counsel Lysowski.
Isaac, really appreciate all your support in revamping the application process and getting this information to us. There was two discrepancies in the allocated fund totals that I did have questions, first being Scappus Public Library. They had over $100 more than what they had requested. In addition, United Way of Columbia County was also allocated $111.84. I just wanted to put that out to the Council to see if we wanted to make any adjustments or if we're okay as it being presented.
I'm okay with it as it's presented.
Yeah, that was one thing in the revamp that I hadn't really considered and never really came up. I think partly because it hadn't ever been an issue. I'm not sure how it was handled in the past. It's something we could change for next year, too, if you'd like. Also, I just want to let everyone know, too, we didn't have any concerns from any of the applicants about the application or the new guidance or grant guidelines. So that went over very well.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the Community Enhancement Funds as presented.
Motion made by Counsel Polling.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counsel Santiago, any discussion? All right, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number three, Contract for On-Call Hydrologist/ Hydrogeologist Services. Mr. Hugh Whitehouse.
Yes, thank you, Council. So the next item for approval in front of you is contracts approval for the On-Call Hydrogeologic Services Agreement as well as their first project, which will be a drinking water source protection study for our wellhead protection plan. So just a little bit of history, we issued RFP 2022-01 to procure a new hydrogeologist on-call services agreement with a hydrogeologist. I don't think there's anything here that's super groundbreaking. Dave and I can answer any of the questions you might have on this project if you have them.
Dave, what did GSI say that sold it for you? Or you and the selection committee?
Yeah, so GSI has been working with us for several years currently, up till now. And then in the renewal of this, in comparison to the other proposers, they have a strong background. They obviously know our infrastructure. They had a very solid presentation to us. It's familiar faces, it was just a good fit. There was a lot, I mean, all three of the proposers were very competitive, very strong. We would not have gone wrong with any choice we made, to be honest with you. One of the firms that proposed, the former employee of GSI, so takes that institutional knowledge as well. So either way, we couldn't have gone wrong, but I think it was pretty unanimous that GSI goes to the top for all of us. Services that they do provide, I don't know if this gets into it, they monitor all of our well health, all of the well fields, they work with Darrell to make sure the levels are appropriate and that we're not declining in any of our water sources or any of our wastewater rates. It is business as usual. We do this annual budget for this kind of work, in and near out, so.
I have a couple of questions. Did you go by lowest price or did you go by value?
We didn't know the prices until
And are they local?
Portland based.
Portland based.
Do I have a motion?
Counsel President.
Counsel Lysowski.
I move that Council authorize City Manager Reins to enter into the following contract, a contract with GSI Water Solutions Incorporated to be the city's on-call hydro oh geez, hydrogeologic services provider and contract with GSI Water Solutions, Inc. for the Drinking Water Source Protection Study.
Motion made by Counsel Lysowski, seconded by Counsel McHugh, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Right, item number four, Resolution Number 22-10, a resolution amending the City of Scappus's wastewater rates and rescinding Resolution Number 15-07. This is a public hearing. I'm going to kick it off with Mr. Sico.
Counsel President, Council, good evening. So yes, as you mentioned before you, it's proposed Resolution 22-10, and it would be rescinding 1507, which established the wastewater rate since the year 2015. This anyway, this resolution should come as no surprise. We've had several work sessions over the last several years about the status of the wastewater treatment plan and the improvements would be up and coming. This aligns with the loan that we have taken out with the State Revolving Fund. To match payments, they require that we adjust our rates accordingly to make those payments. In doing this, Donovan Enterprises evaluated where our status is financially, what the loan payments are going to need to be, where we are, and it penciled out to be a 7% increase for the next five years. You know, this is not desired, but it is out of necessity. We have to keep our infrastructure operating efficiently, and that's where we're at. Any other questions, I'd be happy to dive into with you.
I think at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak about this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions?
Counsel President.
Yes.
So this was the one that we changed the term length on the loan?
We will be.
Yes.
As of right now, the loan is still under the original terms and conditions. Once we finalize the facility plan with DEQ, we're waiting for one last final blessing on it, then we will be adjusting the loan accordingly and getting that. The loan is still in place, just with the original 6.4 million, we haven't expanded on that yet.
Do I have a motion?
I motion, Council, adopt Resolution Number 2210, a resolution amending the City Scappus's wastewater rates and rescinding Resolution Number 15-07.
Motion made by Counsel McHugh.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counsel Lysowski, any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five. Ordinance Number 900, An Ordinance of the City of Scappus Authorizing City Staff to Collect a Construction Excise Tax on behalf of the Scappus School District. This is a public hearing first reading. We'll go with Isaac Butman.
Council, back again about the construction excise tax. Since we last met, the school district did officially adopt their capital improvement plan. They did that in April, and they warranted to us that the plan does meet the statutory requirements outlined in RS 320183. These are all in the exhibits. They're essentially saying that that plan does meet the requirements for them to collect the construction excise tax. The tax increase that they're asking for is within the limits set by the state. That's also seen, they can see that in Exhibit A. So we are recommending that Council adopt Ordinance 900 as written, without modifying the IGA at this time to allow them to begin collecting their tax. This does not preclude us adjusting the IGA in the future. It simply lets them go ahead and start collecting that tax essentially as soon as the ordinance passes and 30 days after. Peter's here, and Alex and I are all here to answer questions if there are any. That's all I have for now.
At this time, we're going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions?
Yes.
Counsel Lysowski.
I want to make sure, excuse me. Peter, do you feel as though that the documentation that was provided by the school district meets our meets our needs and/or the state requirement for proper documentation?
So I had asked them to warrant that, and they made that representation and warranty to us that this does meet the state's requirements.
And could you share with me what that process looks like so I could have a better understanding?
So this is, this is, I'm just going to be incredibly lightly honest. This has been a real struggle for us because we normally work within fixed parameters and are used to seeing a lot of things, and transparency is very important to us. There are a number of different state programs that seem to do very similar things as far as long-range infrastructure plans. Some of those are to get a portion of shared state dollars, some of those are to do a construction excise tax. And there's very little detail, even in the Oregon Administrative Rules, about like the different nuances between those programs. So I do not represent any school districts, and I don't have experience with these plans. And so what I asked them to do, since they are the experts, is simply to make that representation and warranty to us so that we could pass that on to you and say, well, acknowledge that we're not experts. This seems substantially similar, and the school district said this complies. And the other thing that I'd add is they're going through a long-term facility improvement plan process right now. And I think that when they go through that process, it envisions a lot of collaboration with the city. I would hope that we would see that. I'd hope that we'd see complete transparency from the school district into how funds from three different taxing jurisdictions, us, Multnomah County, and Columbia County, were all collected and spent, and that we can make sure that the governments and the residents in the school district and everybody going forward understand exactly how the funds are going to be spent and accounting for that. And I think when that happens, it could be a really healthy discussion and opportunity. And tell them the reason this is before you, which again was a a bit controversial and that we thought that we needed to happen and they didn't, is that we are increasing the tax by close to 50%. And so I think it's very important, when we talk about housing affordability and everything else, that residents have an opportunity to come in, participate in that public hearing if they do. Anytime I'm looking at a tax increase, I'm going to want to see that be done by an ordinance so that opponents can come and proponents, both can come, let their voices be heard. And if they want to refer that, that can happen. And so that's why we're here tonight with an ordinance. I believe that the documentation that we've gotten is as much as we can reasonably believe that we're going to get and that going forward, we're going to take a real close look at this IGA and other things to make sure that it meets the long-term needs of the community.
And a follow-up question. So in the future, so that this group in this can make better decisions, with the IGA in regards to the release of the funds, the tax dollars to the school district, correct? Is that the IGA that you're indicating? Do we in our governmental agreement? Thank you. Does the city have the right to designate what documentation we suggest can be provided by the school district?
I would anticipate that would be what we would ask for in the IGA. I did not negotiate the current IGA, and frankly, there's some ambiguity in there that hasn't been helpful. And again, not to say that anything wrong has happened or that the lawyer that did it did anything wrong. It's just, if you have everything in really clear terms, it allows everybody that's a part of that IGA to understand their own responsibilities. And so going forward, I'd hope that's what will be in any agreement. And we want to collaborate with the school district, we see them as a partner. We want to be good stewards of these funds, and so do they, that's what we believe. And so again, I don't want to infer that there's been anything going in the past. Just let's make sure we're all on the same page going forward.
The other thing I would just mention, too, is I know that when you're actually looking at the statutes, the city, although we are collecting the tax on behalf of the school district, the statutes, to my knowledge, don't say anything about us actually auditing or really watching what it is they're doing with the funds. So I would just want to be thoughtful, too, that whatever it is that we are coming to a mutual agreement with, that we just keep in mind that that's probably not really a role we want to take on, nor is it really outlined and I think envisioned for us to be doing that. As Peter said, they did warrant that the information and documentation provided to us follows statute. So we feel that we had concluded our due diligence, and we, of course, are still more than happy to look at the IGA and those terms, if that's something that you all would like to do. But we did want to make sure that they have the opportunity to collect the funds sooner rather than later. And so we felt that it was appropriate at this point to bring this to you now and then to look at the IGA at a later time if that was still something you all wanted to pursue.
I have a question. So are we, to clarify, are we just saying here we're, the city's going to collect, but not audit, not have a say on how the money is spent? Is that correct?
Yes, they are not, it's not our funds, so we get an administration fee for collecting them. But this is something that school districts are allowed to do, and other agencies collect the funds on their behalf and then pass them over. Like I said, we do charge an administration fee. Now, it is very clear in the statutes what they can and can't spend the money on. So the state is providing instructions on that, but we are not here to audit what they're doing. Their information's public record, you can certainly public records request what you want to see and look at that for yourself. But the statute does not outline the agencies collecting those funds as also the people who would be auditing them to make sure that they are following the rules. That's just not our role.
So why is it, what would be, obviously, just not the fee, getting the administration fee, but what would be the benefit?
Of the construction excise tax itself?
No, no, to benefit of collecting versus, like you said, there was a, there's a programs or other
So
or softwares that you mentioned, that they do it already?
Right, so
For the city doing it.
For this particular tax, it is calculated when they apply for a building permit, and they get that from, if it's within the city, they get that from us, and we go through that approval process with them. So at that point, we collect it. If it's in unincorporated Multnomah County, which the school district is there, then Multnomah County would tabulate that fee and collect it. And if it's in unincorporated Columbia County, it would be the county. So it's really that for a certain percentage of housing or commercial permits, we're the agency that
Issues the permits.
Yeah, that issues the permits.
That's why we're the point of collection.
So we can force the collection at that point versus them having to chase the collection later, which is why the state legislature designated us as the fiscal agent for any money collected within our city.
Counsel Lysowski.
So yeah, just clarifies, we're essentially, or on the surface, it looks like we are a clearinghouse for the excise taxes to get to the school district.
Correct.
We take a small administrative fee because we're collecting on that at the front end when the permit is being requested. I just also wanted to say, I appreciate both City Attorney Watts and also City Manager Reins for continuing to work with the school district through this. And we appreciate your reporting back to allow us to have that transparency to better understand and be able to communicate to that information to those who may ask.
Counsel President.
Counsel Polling.
You know, so I, looking through all the documentation and just over and over again, and you know, I think that they fulfilled all the duty that it really states in there. And I would hope that the school district would be a little more open to us in the future with, you know, with the usage of funds and what direction we go with kind of our IGA going forward, I think maybe would be good to kind of have that a little more defined. Personally, I think that any type of clarity that we can offer to the public, just being in the eyes would be good.
Right, I mean, when Dave's doing a pavement project, the reason that he puts up the signs that says that it's being paid for using our gas taxes, just to let the public know. And so, you know, my experience with different jurisdictions is the more transparent you are about how you're spending funds and making sure that you're getting that out in the community so they can see how those dollars are at work for them, the easier it is to explain to them and the easier it is to get funds in the future if you need those. So, you know, again, that's just my opinion, but I would hope that the school district would would act similarly going forward.
Any else?
So my question would be, if we approve this, will we prove it with, would be conditions of them being more transparent?
No.
Or it's just something that we're just approving that we will allow the
Look at the agreement later, okay.
Do I have a motion?
Counsel President. I move that Council adopt Ordinance Number 900, an ordinance of the City of Scappus authorizing city staff to collect a construction excise tax on behalf of the Scappus School District as written.
Seconded.
Motion made by Counsel Lysowski, seconded by Counsel McHugh. So the title is on first read, so do I just read it again? Ordinance Number 900, An Ordinance of the City of Scappus Authorizing City Staff to Collect a Construction Excise Tax on behalf of the Scappus School District. I read all the whereas's? Perfect. All right, and we'll get back to second reading at the next meeting, thank you. All right.
Jumping.
Thanks. Working on it. All right, number six, item number six. Ordinance Number 901, An Ordinance Amending Scappus Municipal Code Title III, Amending Chapter 3.16, Check Returned for Non-Payment. Assistant to the City Manager Isaac Butman.
Council, again, hi. This is a housekeeping measure. When Scappus Municipal Code Section 3.16 was codified, the most common way of payments being transmitted was through cash or check. And one of the issues that is common with checks is a non-payment. There's a couple of ways those typically happen. The most common is a not sufficient fund. So when you take a check to the bank and try to deposit it to get the money, there's not enough money in someone's account. There's a couple of other ways that can happen, if an account is closed or if the account just doesn't exist. And so this municipal code section addresses that by incentivizing people to not pass what are colloquially known as bad checks and to compensate the city for the excess staff time and burden that it takes to process those checks, go out and recollect. In the intervening years since when 3.16 was originally passed, electronic fund transfers of a wide variety of types have then become more common in the financial sector. That can be anything from a debit or credit transaction to an quote-unquote e-check. You know, also things like Cash App and PayPal and other things that we don't currently collect, but maybe in the future we will. So this rewrite of this section is simply to apply the essentially excess charge for passing a quote-unquote bad check to these other electronic means because they can also be passed with not sufficient funds or passed with an account that's been closed, just to simply compensate staff and the city, again, the city for the time that it takes for the staff to process those, reprocess them, et cetera. So it looks like a lot of redlining, and it kind of is, but essentially what it's getting at is just saying when people pay the city for whatever, typically a utility payment, that we would like them to make sure they're actually passing us a valuable form of payment. We tried to write this in a way that's future-proof, so it applies to more than just the contacts we can see now, but hopefully electronic payment methods that happen in the future so we don't have to open this particular section up again. This change was recommended by our interim finance administrator, who said that this would be a really good way to kind of take a very simple step to kind of bring municipal code up into the current context. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
This is a first read tonight, so I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Ordinance number 901 and ordinance amending Scappus Municipal Code Title III, Amending Chapter 3.16, check returned for non-payment. All right, hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that council adopt ordinance number 901, ordinance amending Scappus Municipal Code Title III, Chapter 3.16, check returned for non-payment as written.
Motion made by Counsel Santiago, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pauling. So title is on first read, ordinance number 901 and ordinance amending Scappus Municipal Code Title III, Amending Chapter 3.16, check returned for non-payment. We'll discuss it at the next meeting. Item number seven.
I've got this one. It conforms our code with current statutory guidelines, circuit court guidelines. So this is just update C, fee that a juror receives if the juror's employer does not pay them.
All right, so we're on item number seven, ordinance number 902 and ordinance of the city of Scappus, amending Scappus Municipal Code 2.20 Municipal Court. This is on first read, so I'll open up the public hearing. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move, I move the ordinance for the city amending the Scappus Municipal Code 2.20 Municipal Court. That
That's fine. Motion made by Counsel Santiago.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Lysowski. The title is on first read, ordinance number 902 and ordinance of the city of Scappus, amending Scappus Municipal Code 2.20 Municipal Court, and we'll see it on the next agenda. Item number eight, resolution number 22-11, a resolution regulating fireworks in the city of Scappus. Isaac Betman.
Counsel, a moment you've all been waiting for, the resolution for fireworks. I will point out this is a fairly wordy and lengthy resolution. There was a lot that at the last council meeting, council asked to be captured in this. The main highlights are that first, it recognizes the two competing sides of this issue, the side that recognizes that fireworks are part of celebratory nature and something that a lot of people love, and also the other side where they can be very harmful to, you know, small children, people who have PTSD and other issues, animals, and they cause a, they pose a very real danger of fire. It calls for coordination between the city and the fire department to protect the community, recognizes the harms and damages that they pose, limits the use of legal fireworks in the city, specifically bans them in parks, roads in parks and city property. This does not include the right of way known as a quote unquote street. So we wanted to make sure that we thought we heard that council wanted them to be still able to be used in the street. It is a safer space than a grassy area. It does ask people to not use fireworks in drier grassy areas, to use caution when using legal fireworks and to also be courteous to their neighbors and people who might be disproportionately affected. And lastly, it does limit the usage of fireworks to the date ranges that we heard at the last meeting. And that's all I've got. Are there any questions about the language we can answer?
We'll, we'll go with the city attorney first and then we'll acknowledge our member in the audience.
Yeah, so practically speaking, one of the things that this does is it allows us to coordinate with the fire department to deputize them for a limited duration to help us with enforcement. We're aware of one or more people that consistently have been using illegal fireworks and we would be writing to them in advance of the holiday to let them know about this enforcement to make sure that they were aware of the rules. The other thing that I would flag is item four, we went back and forth with this. In other cities that I represent, it's fireworks on December 31st and January 1st and then the 4th of July only versus the two, July 2nd to 6th range. Just so people with PTSD or with pets know that those are the two dates where they really need to maybe go somewhere. People might not be expecting fireworks, particularly loud ones on on July 2nd or certainly after the holiday. So that's just a policy choice for you guys. There's no right answer. Those are just a couple of the things that I've seen highlighted in other jurisdictions.
John, did you want to come up and speak? I don't know if that one's on. I think this left one is, I see a red. Perfect. Would you like to state your name and city for the record?
Yes, Madam President, my name is John Riuta, live in Scappus, Oregon. President, members of the council, thank you for entertaining me tonight. I have to say, I was a bit nervous when I walked in and saw the children. If this had been December, the sudden appearance of an old bearded portly man in that fashion dress might have raised untrue impressions.
Sure.
Fortunately, we're safe. It's June. But I'm beginning to think that I'm coming to visit you about once a year on this matter. I would have been here last month. Fortunately, I had, I had to try out the virus that everyone seems to be getting. And so I tried it, I don't recommend it. But I'm over that now and I'm here. And I've had many people contact me since that meeting due to the newspaper article, asking me if I was going to weigh in on this. And I thought, well, it's my civic duty to do so. Fortunately, I received a copy of the resolution and I've read it through a few times now. And I would, I would like to think that in the words of Sir Winston Leonard Spencer Churchill, that this is of course not the end. This is not the beginning, but it perhaps is the end of the beginning. So as we come upon July 4th again, we're going to put this to the test. And the new information conveyed by the good city attorney leaves me with greater hopes than what I walked into this chamber with. I was not aware of some of the courses of action that were in fact planned. The initial resolution that I read essentially said that illegal fireworks were illegal and that legal fireworks were legal. It was not a good idea to light them in grassy areas and that many people find them very enjoyable. Just to make clear, I have never been terribly concerned with legal fireworks. Those are the source of much community enjoyment. They are fundraisers for many of our local organizations as you only have to drive past the Fred Meyer parking lot every year to see the giant circus marquee erected, operated, I might say, by the son of a friend of ours and some of his close companions. So these are fine. This is not something I'm concerned about. What I'm concerned about is of course the giant incendiaries. And as the city manager or city attorney, sorry, noted, it is well understood that there are certain individuals in our community who live by the motto of tenne carvisium et hunc, which for those of you who have been a bit far from Latin, translates into hold my beer and watch this. That we know exactly what they're going to do. They do it every year. And so unfortunately, I fear that I will still have to be out on my back deck, as any of my neighbors will be with our garden hoses connected, waiting for something on fire to fall opposite our trees. And so what I would ask is, of course, I wholeheartedly speak in favor of this resolution, but I ask that it not be the final word on this matter, that after this particular holiday is passed, that at some point the matter is taken back up again, that we see how the initial actions eroded and what needs to be done next. Because this is not something that's going to be solved quickly. It is a deeply entrenched tradition in our community. Fortunately, it's one that is both dangerous and illegal. And so this is going to take a bit of time to solve, but I think that this is an excellent first step and I commend the council for taking it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing it to us.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Peter had mentioned a potential discussion on item number four in regards to dates. Aside from that or including that, are there any questions?
Counsel President.
Yes, Counsel Pauling.
I actually am in favor of keeping it the same and only so because of, you know, the way that the holiday falls. Sometimes it would be nice for weekends for kids. Sometimes it's hard to get your kids out to shoot fireworks off on certain days and maybe weather's nicer on certain other days. So having that ability to be able to do that for parents would be good. So that's my opinion.
So you wanted to, are you talking about number four?
Want to
Keep it open, keep it open between two, the second and the sixth?
The second to the sixth, yes.
I would just mention too that, yes, this was definitely meant as a first step. We wanted to work with the fire district and see how all this went. I know that at one point there had been some discussion about, you know, passing an ordinance. We didn't really have enough time to really work through that kind of a process. So we thought that, you know, this was important to put out there and put it in writing and start the conversation with the fire district, which we have done. But this certainly isn't done. The idea is that we would, you know, put this in place, give this a shot, adjust as needed, and then move forward. So yes, I would agree that this is, yes, it's a first step, but there'll be more as we move forward and we can make adjustments as we see necessary. But we wanted to put something down before the holiday rolled around to address this.
Counsel Santiago.
For the record, what's the penalty? If someone gets caught with illegal fireworks or or is not, is putting up fireworks after these days or, you know, what are the consequences?
Depends on the fireworks.
Right, it depends on what's occurred. I mean, the, you know, our police officers would would issue citations and then there's been some discussion about working with fire district to deputize them so they could issue citations as well. They just need to know how to actually issue them into municipal court. It would really depend on the circumstances. My understanding is that in the past, what's been shared with me is that these can be difficult to issue citations for because a lot of the times by the time you get there, the person's gone or the, you know, that they're not lighting fireworks off. Right, exactly. So I think there's been a bit of a challenge there, but we're hoping that if we can work a little more closely with the fire district, that maybe we can kind of close in on that issue and spread our resources a little bit wider.
Do we have time for a submission before the next newsletter that gets out before the 4th of July that perhaps would include some of this information? Great, thank you.
Yeah.
If it's a million dollar fee.
I just think that there would be, you know, legal repercussions or something.
I think that Chief Pressure is in a very close proximity to one of the most open and notorious people and that thus, you know, informing that person of that and and deputizing him and others so that they can sight and seize, because it's not just sight, it's that as soon as it happens, they have probable cause to go on the property that they can, they can then seize the illegal fireworks. And hopefully that would make them find somewhere else besides the city of Scappus to engage in their, maybe near a large body of water, their activities, or maybe in Washington State.
Somewhere where it's legal or not at all. Thank you, okay. Do we have a motion?
Counsel President.
Counsel Pauling.
I move that council adopt ordinance number 901 and ordinance amending Scappus Municipal Code Title III, Chapter 3.16. Oh, sorry, that is the wrong one. Let me jump back. Apologize. If I read the right one.
Yeah.
I move that council adopt resolution number 2211, a resolution regulating fireworks in the city of Scappus as shown.
Motion made by Counsel Pauling. A second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counsel Santiago. Any discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Great, item number nine. Calendar check? All right, so for the entire rest of the month of June, every Saturday, the farmer's market from 9:00 AM to 2:00. That's today, okay. On the 9th, we have planning commission at 7:00 PM. On the 20th, we have an urban renewal agency budget meeting starting at 6:30 with the city council meeting at 7:00. And on the 23rd, planning commission at 7:00 PM. And it looks like to be determined economic development in Parks and Rec. Announcements, city manager Rains.
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
There's correspondence between myself and the county council that was given to you if you just want to start at the end and read. And I think it speaks for itself.
Lori or Brian? Since you're here today? We're very excited. Brian, anything? Counsel Pauling.
I just want to again welcome the new chief. I know he's not here now, but I'm super excited for that, for him. So and other than that, that's all I have.
Counsel Lysowski.
Yeah, I would second the opportunity to meet the new chief has been, was really exciting. I'm very happy to have him on on our team. He definitely does have a presence of folks to be surrounding him in his transition here to Scappus, so really excited for that. I wanted to congratulate the young women and men of Scappus's graduating class of 2022. I think we might have got a little wet on them on Saturday, but you know, as true Oregonians, I think that they will fare just fine through all of the, through all the rain that they did see, but I wish them the best on their next steps in the journey of life. Lastly, I do want to highlight the tragedy that has occurred not only in Texas and not only in New York and not only in California. I mean, I could list almost every single state to the families that have lost the young children, the teachers, the family members to gun violence. My heart goes out to those. Seems to be plaguing our society, specifically here in the United States of America. And we must do better for ourselves, we must do better for one another. I know that I don't have a solution, but I know that we are, we are not providing the communities in which every individual can thrive. And so whatever it is that we need to take a long, long look in the mirror to understand what it is that we are providing to our communities, to our, to our children, I think that we need to step up to the moment and figure out what steps we are going to take moving forward. So again, my heart and condolences to those across this great nation. Thank you.
Counsel McHugh.
Well, I'd like to second what Counsel Lysowski has just said, not going to beat it, he said it so well, but go hard school out to all those suffering from the gun violence that I really understand, I guess. And I would like to just make one quick comment. I was at the open house for Habitat Humanity on property between Olive and Myrtle, I think. And it went very well, except it rained like crazy. Same rain that got the graduates. And but it was quite interesting. There are some community concerns that came up. I felt that I should should mention, or Lori's, or Dee's, or maybe she hasn't, I don't know, but they, there are some people concerned about two level homes in that that particular area. And and that seemed to be the biggest concern that the most people seem to have, that it didn't fit real well with the rest of the neighborhood. So just thinking upon myself to pass that along as best I can. So anyway, thanks everybody for the good work you guys do. Appreciate it. Congratulations to our new chief.
Counsel Santiago.
Also like to welcome the new chief. I had the the pleasure of meeting him the other day and it was great to get, you know, get to know him. So and I really happy to see that he has that kind of support. And so he did mention he has family, but he does And so he did mention he has family, but he does really have family here, so it was nice to see. Um, I echo what uh both our councilors said as well, um, and that's it. Thank you, guys, thank you.
While the mayor's having a blast in Reno, I saw on Instagram, but no, he is doing some really good work, going to a a conference, a mayor's conference, so we thank him for bettering himself and hopefully bringing back some information that we can put to good use. But I had the privilege of being the baccalaureate speaker on Friday in front of the high schoolers, um, which was just a real privilege to just be in their presence. Um, they've, you know, I couldn't not say something about the last several years. And um, one of the things that really stood out to me, as you're mentioning with violence, I had, I had interviewed, kind of sat down with past teachers and parents and current current administration. And one thing they said about this class, K through twelfth grade, was that they're a very inclusive group of people. They don't stand for um for people bullying against others that might be other. And um that really stood out. And one of the things that the principal had mentioned was that they have at Scapoose High School just little to absolutely no physical fighting this year. And he said that that was really due to the the reset that the senior class came into, which granted, the last time they'd been there was spring of sophomore year, and they just kind of set this tone that we don't do that here and that's just not how we engage with each other. And so I really talked about the power of words, right, verse um physical violence and and whatnot. And um, I had reiterated that if you want to see change, then you're the ones to do it. You know, we can't just sit by and, you know, as much as we say we're sorry, right? We have to do something about it. And I think that we're all finding this sort of boil in us that is about to explode, that it's got to, I mean, there's just no other option. So um, I was very pleased to meet with um Chief Lugall and kind of talk about the relationship with the school district and his hopes, his concerns, areas of opportunity um for the school district and safety in terms of entering a school campus or what that looks like in terms of being a volunteer and entering to the campus. Or he's just really um ready to get in there and understand the lay of the land and how we would ever need to, not in a situation like that, but just respond to anything on school campus. And one thing I was really excited about, he had said was, you know, we just want to make, not make policing more attractive, but we just want to be there to have fun too, right? So I had mentioned, you know, a field day coming up and he's like, oh, we're going to send someone over there just to be there and cheer the kids on, you know? So I'm really excited for that and his eagerness to kind of just have have officers be more present and just um fun people to be around, so. And he definitely is a very fun person to be around, so. With that, meeting adjourned.